We're gonna call the meeting to Ori. I know we don't have administration to run here, but we're actually seven minutes late and the forum just walked in the room, so let's get started.
You got 12 minutes.
We have a very big agenda tonight, so welcome, everybody. I just wanted to say first, I hope you all got my email about Tara's good news.
Yeah.
The baby, absolutely gorgeous. Yeah, we're so happy for her. So, there's a card going around that we're gonna send to her. And I think, you know, when I talk to her, I think she's gonna try to, hopefully someday she'll make it to a board meeting, who knows if it'll be this winter or not, but I'll bet that she'll come over at some point, bring that gorgeous little baby, so let's hope so.
That's what we're all about, the future of babies.
That's right. Unfortunately, they don't live in Leland and Gray district, but it's okay, who knows? They moved to Westminster, a while ago, she was still on the, she was still doing our minutes when they moved, so, so we miss her, she's still over at Branson. Okay, so, members of the public, I know you're here for...
Mary could pop in, I have one little question.
You're welcome to do it now, or if it's something related to the agenda, you wanna wait, it's completely up to you.
I don't know, this is, I was just reading this newsletter, and I know that, I spoke to Durin a little bit about the attendance policy here, and I'm not clear as if this changed, the end of it just says that they're gonna work with every family to improve student attendance and what being, and I know that in the past, we spoke at the parent, the committee meeting, and you said you were, you know, you were gonna do some investigation and come back with some thoughts and ideas, and this, I didn't know if you had something different in place, or if this was vague to me, I guess, I just don't know if there's any clarity for me, maybe I'm not reading it.
Is this something I should talk about now, or?
It's not already on the agenda for something else, so, yeah, right.
It's not on the agenda tonight.
So, yeah, absolutely, feel free to...
Okay, so at the October Parent Advisory Group, we spent about half the meeting on the topic, I had done that survey that eighty principals in Vermont responded to, we reviewed the results, and we discussed it further, and we felt that no more change was needed, based on what I found out.
So there was no more, or there wasn't any change from what you first...
No, there was no change, right.
Okay, that wasn't clear, I had a few parents that were at the meeting wondering what was...
So the newsletter wasn't clear, is that what you're saying? It wasn't clear to you the newsletter?
Well, we, there were about ten of us at the meeting, and I've been in contact with some of them, and when we left, they were under the impression, I think, that there was, there was some consideration about, you know, making some changes, that was kind of what they, and I assumed, so then I read this, this is the first time I've seen anything on it since October, so, I guess, just trying to get some more information so I can put it out there and find out what your thoughts were on it.
Well, what I can give you is the, basically, data I collected.
Well, you put it all there.
Okay, it was a little more, but the most important stuff was in there, yep, and so based on that, at the October, because we met in September, we talked about it, and then at the October, we decided that no change was necessary based on what we found out.
Who and whose way?
The Parent Advisory Group, the people who presented that night.
I guess I'll get back to the, you know, who, uh, one of those...
That'd be great, yeah, go through that group who was working with Durin.
Yeah, or maybe you have the names of the people.
No, off the top of my head.
Great, thank you, hope you stay.
Thank you, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Okay, and Mary, you're gonna be doing your nothing here, you're coming right up.
All right.
Was there anything else you wanted to say besides what you're, okay, just wanted to make sure you, our additions or corrections to the agenda, I don't have any to read, no, we're gonna move on to correspondence, I don't have any, so it was just the newsletter.
It's just in the box.
Okay, so there was no letter?
Can we get copies of the newsletter?
Is that online?
Oh, is it?
It should be online.
It's on, it's on, yeah, it's online, but here, we'll pass it that way to her so she can see it.
You can have this one, I get two. Well, you see, I have two children in school, and Leland and Gray can't figure out that one per...
Yeah, we're making...
WCSU can't figure it out either, so it's not just Leland and Gray.
Anybody else wanna see it?
No, no, I have another one on the...
Okay, all right, so we're on to administrative and board reports, before we jump into this one, I just wanted to mention that there's a slight change to our agenda that you aren't used to seeing, and that is where this number sits, where it says administrative and board reports, that used to always be just administrative reports, based on the fact that Lindell's been going to these Wyndham Regional Career Center Advisory Board meetings and wanting to report back, Seaton wanted to put her under the reports, and I said, well, if we're gonna put her under the reports at every meeting, now you don't have to report at every meeting, but if, if you're going to report, we should have an administrative and board reports, so we added the word board to that, to number six, because occasionally we do have committees or, or things like that, where, and so, in the discussion, and Joe brought something else up that I'll clarify too, but in the discussion around adding the Wyndham Regional Advisory Committee or Wyndham Regional Career Center Advisory Board, we also added in the RED, or the V R E D S C, report, out of old business and under that, because it's a regular report we do every month, so anyway, that's the big change here, so if there's any board reports, if any of you are representing the board in any way, it'll be put under that, under number six, so, we're gonna go right to you, the principal.
I'll turn it over to Mary Davis, our science teacher, who will present the new work that's happening in the Science Department.
Thank you, Mary.
No problem.
Mary teaches most of the eighth grade science classes in the physical world, she also teaches earth science, and is science elected this year as well.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, you seem, you seem busy and active.
Yes. If you could just take one of those, pass them around, I have been here before, about a year ago, and so I recognize some of you and all of you, and I don't know if I need...
Do we need to listen to you one?
Oh, that's okay, I mean...
It's still...
Right, it's board. That's all right, whatever, whatever we're comfortable with, I know we're tight on time, so, I'll just go into things, this one that's coming around right now, I only made six copies of, just to save on paper, that's the detailed unit plan that I created, and it may be something that you just want to take a glance at, but there's a good overview of it, summary on the other handout, that everyone should have gotten one of them. So what I'm here to talk about tonight is STEM education and some of the STEM work that I've done outside of Leland and Gray, and how I bring that back to Leland and Gray, incorporating that into the classroom, so, just before I get started, is everyone familiar with STEM and what that stands for?
We're not, behind the curve.
So the S is for, here, what's that?
I said, we don't know what it is, we're a little bit...
Okay.
It is the topic, right from the governor or the country, actually.
Right, it is, and if you go to the US government's education website, it's all over there, too, well, that's good news, that means I can kinda skip through this first thing pretty quickly, what is STEM education, I'll move on to talking about why we should be doing STEM, and I'll talk about how I'm implementing it, so, generally, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and it's really not just all those things taught in isolation, it's all of them integrated, and Leland and Gray is doing a fabulous job of that from what I've seen so far, and even compared to other schools, when I go back to professors I've worked with outside of Leland and Gray, they're impressed that we have STEM courses that are taught at the middle school level, so, that's really, we're a step ahead, and it's about encouraging STEM to be integrated in all the disciplines, even outside of the STEM courses that we teach, I think is one of the next steps, so, why are we talking about STEM? Well, according to international tests, we're 25th in mathematics as a country, in terms of, I have, this source is from the US Department of Education, so these are international tests administered to many different nations, and we are really behind the curve for where we should be, 25th in mathematics, 17th in science, and generally, about 6% of our undergraduate majors are going into engineering, and that's really the second lowest in developed countries, so, these are really for a country that is at the forefront of many things, surprisingly low standards, and, we're missing out on a huge job opportunity for our students, there are currently about 14 million people unemployed in the US, and there are 3 million unemployed STEM jobs, so this is a huge area for students who are graduating to get a shoe into the economy, and get a job, and get out there and do things, you do have this chart on your handout, and I know that these things on the bottom can be hard to read, but it just lists the different fields in STEM, so biomedical engineering, medical scientists, system software, there's many different fields where we're looking for STEM people, and we just don't have people who are qualified to fill those positions, so, it's really good for the students to pursue this field, and to have a strong background in it, in today's technology-oriented society, so, and the final, one other reason to encourage people going to STEM is we've got so many problems that need fixing as a country, as a planet, people who are knowledgeable in the STEM fields can make a difference, and the more we give our students the tools to do that, the more we're going to see that come back to society as a whole. So, my background in STEM comes from a few different areas, since I graduated from college, I've been taking courses through the NASA Endeavor Program, and the NASA Endeavor Program is a science teaching certificate project, and the goal is to train STEM educators, so NASA is giving back to the community by providing this education that will hopefully filter down to the students, and this is something that I've been taking class in about every semester, so it's been a total of five courses, and two of those are STEM methods and STEM leadership that are required, and their general education on how to integrate STEM, the other ones are courses that I've been able to choose and select from, just according to my interests and what I teach, so I can bring these things into the classroom with my students, so many of these things fit very well with earth science and with physical science, and tonight, what I'm going to be focusing on is just physical science in motion, because that's the main, the main component of the lesson plan I developed, I've also taken some courses through the UMass Nanotech Technology Institute, and they offer a variety of programs, and they're so close and convenient for teachers at Leland and Gray, I know many other of the science teachers have been able to take advantage of those, I'll skip through this one pretty quickly, but some different strategies for teaching STEM include scientific inquiry, we use technology as a tool, working as a team to go through an engineering design process, applying mathematics, learning in context, so taking these situations, applying them to the real world, not just giving some nebulous math problem that, you know, seems to come out of nowhere, and what I developed for my coursework is a unit on physical science that introduces Newton's laws through an engineering design challenge, so, basically, what students would do is using the procedure that's on the back of your handout, is develop a rubber band car, and I have some very, very rough prototypes that were actually developed by other members of the science, technology, and engineering, and science, technology, and math departments at Leland and Gray, and the idea is that the unit would start with students being told that they are going to participate in this challenge, and challenging them to create the fastest car they can, they would not be told really the mathematics of velocity or anything like that, it's supposed to be totally open-ended, and they would be given the supplies and the instructions to create the car, but after that, it's an engineering process that they're going through on their own, so they need to be able to make mistakes, they need to be able to experiment, and go back and modify their design to improve it, so, they go through that process on day one with just designing the cars, day two of the lesson, they would run three trial races, based on the results of those races, they could modify their design, and then have a final race, and we actually have little motion sensors in the Science Department here that can analyze the velocity of the cars as they move, so that data is instantaneously transferred to the students, and they can see how their car is doing. The rest of the lesson plan would be introducing the physics behind the engineering design process, so how maybe the area, the radius of the wheels impacts the distance the car will go, talking about the mass of the car, how that impacts its speed, and there are many different things that you can use online, several of them are NASA outlets that students can go through and do practice problems with, to get, practice with this math, and day four would be introduction of Newton's first law, and then that force concept, and this is all in more detail in your notes, I'm just breezing through it right now, or in the thicker packet, the one that has all the standards on it and thorough outline of the unit, and then the fifth day would kind of be the evaluate day, where students would be asked to actually illustrate their understanding of Newton's laws in a cartoon, and caption it with descriptions that indicate their understanding of the process, so, I'll show you how the cars work, but these are some images of the teachers at Leland and Gray going through this process, and I got to run through this with the teachers before running it through with the students, and I haven't done it with the students yet, and I'm really glad I got to practice with the teachers, because I learned a lot about what's going to go wrong, so, these are some cars that were created, and the idea is that you have a rubber band that is stretched around a catch on the back axle of the car, you wind this around, and you hope your wheels don't fall off like that, but it's okay, they can be reattached, and if you wind this enough, then you're storing potential energy in the rubber band that will be hopefully converted to kinetic energy, if I release this, and it goes.
It's like my teachers.
So, a student would probably go through this process and say, oh, that really didn't work, how can I improve it, that's what we're hoping anyways, that's what the teachers did, and we developed some different ideas on how to improve the wheels, maybe making them thicker, sturdier, many different ideas for improving the design immediately came into being, and a lot of that was because the teachers were working as a team, they could exchange ideas, they could bounce their thoughts around, and really learn from each other, so a lot of the engineering design process is a cooperative process, which is great for student learning, so, that's, that's the unit plan in a nutshell, I know I went really quickly through some of those points, are there any questions?
I'll just go here, I took a workshop once on, I was school board, National School Boards Association, we did it in groups like you said, so, if they liked, the adults were completely adopted by just how we figured, we had different sides, we had bands and challenges, and it was the most fascinating thing, I can see where this was really, this really makes you think, it really does, I was pleased with that workshop, it was amazing.
And you know, incorporate so many pieces that are so important, that, as you stressed, the teamwork, and you gave them the time, the teachers actually, but you'll give the kids the same, when it didn't work, they had three days or something to go back and redefine it, and talk to each other, it's just a beautiful moment, you're learning.
I did something like this last year, and it was the only time when I've had students come in during homeroom to ask me if they can get started on the project, so, I know that it's something that they enjoy, too, yes.
I've had some people on the table here, remember those toys we had where you would impart?
And to have them build up the energy.
Yeah, I have.
I think you're still, you're still good at that.
I think so.
It's similar concept, but this, you know, taking one of those apart doesn't really get you very far, and you're actually building a scratch from this, it's an essential creative process, and inquiry cycle, learning from your investigation, and improvement, yeah, better outcome, great.
I was gonna ask, so you're starting with the cars, and then you're ending by teaching the concept, is that the first step?
Yes, it is because I really want them to be able to approach this with a blank slate, so that they are learning it as they go through it, one of the, sometimes it's better to see them struggle with the concept before introducing it to them, because the, once I introduce this to them, they'll be able to say, aha, that's why this did this, and that's why this did that, and there is time also in the unit to come back to this later, after they've learned the concepts, and they then apply them to further improve their design.
So I remember the car work when you were...
Right, yep.
Love the hands, I think it's fabulous.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun for me, too.
When I get to the gauge, when you said they're experimenting and doing it, it's easier to understand instead of the sharing lecture.
And a lot of these concepts are intuitive for them, too, they know that if a car is heavier, it'll react a different way.
But they're proving it, they're proving the intuition, which is bad, it was, yeah, it's great.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mary, for presenting to us in the, after you've worked hard all day, and it's really good to make this connection, if we can't get the kids here, okay, the teachers here is the next best step, but we don't pick her off, and they're very busy with these, so it's hard to get them, so, very appreciative.
Thank you for having me.
I would suggest taking videos of the car.
Oh, I'll try that.
It's a lot better than skills as far as like watching the on...
Okay, good, thank you.
First of all, before you do the ones where the presentation...
Well, part of her summer program, she had to do a presentation that was over an hour with math and science and tech teachers, including our IT staff, so when I heard that, I said, oh, you go, you're presenting what you did this summer with NASA, so, that was part of this, that's where that came from, okay.
Ori, can I ask you one question? So I notice you guys are putting both, both standards, wonder, when will, are you now, are we now implementing the next generation science standards, are they?
We actually are, we're still in the transition, but we, it's based, but we are teaching more to the next generation standards than we are to Vermont framework, and I actually had to call the Vermont Agency of Education, because we won't get tested on those standards until 2017, and so I called and I said, you've introduced these new standards, we've worked with a consultant, and we are realigning our curriculum, and how are students gonna do on the science NECAP, when we're gonna be, which is the main framework, right, and he explained to me that, was it she, some time ago, it was a couple months ago, but the person from the agency said that the next generation standards are harder, and there's more applied work and inquiry, and also much more integration between the different areas, and so, so, don't worry about it, if anything, you'll do better.
Yep.
Ori, I can actually say hello to you, Maya, Maya?
Maya, yes.
And we already went over members of the public, but you're welcome to, I don't know if you're here for something specific, or just for our whole board meeting, but I just wanted to welcome you as well, and say, if you have something you want.
Nothing specific.
Great, well, join in, thank you for being here, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the second thing that was from the principal's report was information about the personal learning plan, because that has become law, and I want to show you what our personal learning plan looks like, the Becoming Career in College Ready form, I think I sent you a PDF of this, but this is what it looks like in kids' hands, students met with their advisors this fall, each one having a copy of this in the teacher advisory that meets once a week, and actually, for middle school students, they meet every day, where they go over their plans, where they wanna be, when they're seniors, or when they graduate, and course requirements, as well as other pathways like travel, other learning interests, it's lots of things here, career exploration, technology, and right up front, it's what do you need to get into college, so, to emphasize that, as well as a little paragraph about math, really trying to encourage students to go to higher level math, because over the years, it was a fairly small percentage of students going through pre-calculus and AP calculus, and we're, and two years from now, we should be in much better shape, because we have so many students now, having eliminated the low-track algebra course, there, we're on track for many, many more students, probably twice as many students being ready for Algebra II next year, their geometry this year, so, I just wanna show you that this is our iteration of the PLP, but we also await more guidelines, because a committee has been appointed by the Agency of Education to propose recommendations, and then, it's funny, because I think the guidelines will be non-binding, but having, all students in grade seven through 12, having a personal learning plan is binding, so they gotta have something, it just doesn't have to look like their recommendations, so, before making any, developing this further, we wanna see what they consider to be the best practices, and there's two other components of the, sorry, go ahead.
I had a thought about this, and as a continuation, possibly after high school, if there was some way to do a, I don't know how prohibitive this is, to do a survey of kids after they've gone on, and find out, say, how they felt the courses they took helped them in their careers, if they weren't right to work, or in college, where are you struggling in college, where you think that, you know, you might have gained some more insight into certain courses, or whatever, and how you feel your education was at Leland and Gray, based on what you're doing now, and how it prepared you for your future, and you're, and they're much more mature at that point, and really have true application ideas, so, I don't know what it meant, I don't know if that's prohibitive, but it was just a thought.
It would be something we'd have to budget for, so tonight, we talked about the proposed budget for next year, because it's not something that a current Leland and Gray employee can take on, I think it's a very worthy undertaking, we have, we have about fifty-five, sixty-five graduates a year, and so if we look back, say, class of 2011 and 2012, or 2010, 2011, and conducted that survey, I know Southside High School began their baseline data to see how far students were going, that's when they established that, the students who finished pre-calculus, 84% of them finished college in four years, and that was, distinguished them from all the other students, and that's how, why they start pushing the math, and so, I would, I'd love to do that, but we'd have to hire someone to do it, but getting access to a valid survey won't be a problem.
Because survey monkey.
Well, I mean, the right questions, so that the questions are valid, yeah, but it would be, they were a telephone survey, so you'd actually be able to draw the information out of the individuals.
Oh, instead of a written, yes, you were...
Right, on, right, and the email addresses, and just a much higher return rate.
Yeah, you'd get much more accurate, you wouldn't be still making assumptions like you do, when you just go based on this many kids graduated, so this must mean that. many kids graduated, so this must mean that. You're making assumptions, whereas if you actually talk to them.
I hope that years gone by, we haven't had this conversation about trying to follow our students after they leave Leland and Gray. Been talking about this during... We talk about it at VSA too. Is there a way... I mean, legislators talk about it. It's important information.
Because I know my daughters...
Really, no one has good access to.
My daughters mentioned to me things that, oh, this was good. This prepared me well for this course or this not so much or whatever, you know.
Well, you will recall, I think, six months ago, Oliver Olson came to the Jamaica meeting and was reporting some data, presenting some data that's online available. It says what's happening. I think it's sophomore year, how many kids are still in, you know, in college, right?
Yeah, that's not accurate.
But, well, it's related. The trouble is, in that case, it's an accurate measure for what it claims to be measuring. It just doesn't take into account or give us any reason to know what the causes are or the reasons because it isn't a controlled survey. Just explain to the public that so sophomore, they canvass sophomores across the country, say, what high school did you graduate from? And then they do a statistical comparison of how many kids entered college and how many are still in college in their sophomore year. And the idea is that if they don't continue, it's because they aren't well-prepared, or at least that's the conclusion that this politician was presenting. Well, in fact, there are lots of other reasons, as you know, for people not to continue in college. And one thing that I recognize that we have to take on, and I think we do it, Leland and Gray, a great deal about this, and that is to broaden the student's learning experience beyond a small village in a small town so that they are more comfortable being in a bigger place, in a bigger setting. Because after all, the big adjustment for most kids moving from high school to college is being on their own, you know, being away from home or living at home and going to school and managing a job. Anyway, there are a lot of adult responsibilities involved there, as well as the temptations of independence and the indulgence that can take place there that sometimes is counterproductive to their academic progress. So anyway, that's the data that is available. And so we would have to do something, you know, that would take an investment. And I think that if the board feels strongly about the administration is eager to perhaps make an estimate, we never got past the concept of just talking about it in the past. But your administration is willing to put a proposal together and figure out how to do it if you want to consider it more seriously in terms of investment of your unlimited resources.
It's kind of like an assessment in a way that sounds targeted.
Could we do that after having the budget discussion? I mean, is it possible to make a motion to have that information pulled together?
Yeah, I just want to make... Well, I mean, I appreciate what Stephen just said, but I also think that, you know, we have to be very serious about whether we're going to ask our administration to put time to something that we may or may not be able to afford to do. So I...
That's exactly what I was saying.
Yeah.
I was putting it in that contract.
Yeah.
Your financial contract.
Yeah. It's the way to get to the next stage of discussion.
Yeah, that's right. But only if it's...
Unless you put a price tag to it.
It's like I said, this is something that everyone struggles with, not just us. I don't mean to sit on anybody, but as I mentioned before, we have a huge agenda.
You do.
So I'm not going... Because everything else has been stated here, the visit to Southside, this is a fourth year in a row, sending teachers to visit the school, modeling practices, that a school buildings and grounds committee has formed. But I wanted to add that another person has joined. Do I have everyone on there? Yeah. Frank is not listed, but he is on the committee as well. So that was an area that you were asking for more information about and that will be coming at some point. So significant progress has been made on school evaluation. On Friday, I meet with Bob McNamara, as well, who's a former superintendent, now consultant, and as well as the principals of the two other schools, Outer Valley and Mill River, to develop our school evaluation plan for next year. So when that is reflected in our budget, what we anticipate that costing. I've been pretty busy with the support of Emily and Stephen about the proposed education quality standards, the EQS, the recommendations that came from the commission. And it was Lindo. Did you show this to me, right?
Yeah, yeah, I brought it in.
Yeah, so I wrote this on Saturday. And here it is in the paper.
Yeah, right in the center, in the middle of the office.
The reformer today. I didn't have a title except your editor, but they call it "On the Future of Our State's Education System." And the thesis of what I state, and I... You all got the copy that I sent to the state board as well as the Agency of Education. And I had heard no response from either of them.
That was October or something, twelve, fifteen?
Yeah, it was. It was centered right up to...
And I decided that while that had two parts of the EQS I was concerned about, the more I thought about it and the more I read through the standards, I felt that it was much more about the credited course requirements that I was worried about, that it really limited possibilities for. So that's what this is really about.
That is very well-written. It's just, it's so clear. It just jumps out at you. It's good.
It made it quite stir with the politicians I was with in Dover, Jeanette White and John Moran. That's why I was late, by the way. I apologize.
I'll take the blame.
No, it's... I mean, it, you know, it's obviously gotten around the state very quickly and been published broadly, or at least they were aware of it because you emailed to them directly, I believe. Anyway, that's part of the public discussion.
Neither the broader audience, so I appreciate this. And I appreciate Doran taking the initiative to move forward.
And I also would advise us all too to recognize this is part of the political discourse. And I would not at all concerned or offended or in any way think we should feel neglected if we don't have an immediate response from the state board of education or whatever politician or agency you send us off to. They're in the deliberative process and the state board is going to take this up, perhaps at their December meeting, but I don't know.
It did get sent to the commission, to the Equality Standards Commission.
Yeah.
So the people who... That task force that was appointed to write up the EQS. Yeah. Although, just so that... Because they're still in process.
Yeah, it's... Yeah, the actual writing is out of their hands at this point. It's public comment, so the state board could return it back to them, of course.
Absolutely.
So contribute your own points of view if you have.
It's on the state board's agenda on November nineteenth.
Oh, they got it on November nineteenth.
And a couple of people, mostly representatives in the legislature, have asked me to present at the state board meeting on November. I'm a little too nervous to say whether I'm going to do it or not.
Oh, you should.
Because every time I do, I get heart palpitations.
Oh, you should.
I'm going to be sitting right beside her.
There we go.
Yeah, because this needs to be heard because otherwise the hearing is November nineteenth or something, and then it moves on to approval.
Oh, I think they're talking about voting on it in December, so...
Well, it needs to hear this.
It's now or never. Yeah, I mean, you know, it may have no impact at all. Who knows?
No, but at least... It's so well-put. We need...
Absolutely. Needs to be... Thank you, Lindo.
We'll put a slip rod in your back there.
She would really need one. She's just saying that.
All right, let's move on to the next. What's next? That's the board report. We'll get to the budget rationale. That's probably our new business, right?
Yeah, the rest of those is... Any other questions for Doran? If not, super tough.
I was going to have mercy on you. The administrative team, all the principals are meeting with me on Monday, and we're going to be addressing some of the same points in this book, Smarter Budgets, Smarter Schools. It's all about not what is right or the wrong way to spend money, but what is the relative best value or the better investment? And of course, like everybody says, we ought to start with the students and the outcomes we seek for students. You know, unfortunately, there are other agendas or there are other... This is a political process. He points out, which is so true to me, that this is not a legislative kind of political process where if you have fifty-one percent of the votes for election, you're elected or the motion passes. In your work as a board with the administration, a majority of people could feel that it's a very good idea, but a small minority of people can make it so politically unpalatable that you don't... You can't follow through with the recommendation of the superintendent, for example, to reduce the number of the hours for crosswalk, you know, monitors in the city, for example, is an example we have. Because if one person says, my kid's going to get killed. I can't, I can't, you know, have this happen. And there are emotional aspects to this in public education that really are significant obstacles for us to spend our money more wisely. So anyway, I'm looking forward to what I get from the administrative team on this and the two chapters that we will be focusing on, just to make sure the public realizes what we're talking about here, is academic return on investment, spending only on what works, and raising productivity and ensuring more learning with less teacher expense.
Sounds like Pauline.
Exciting times. We got this from the VSA, VSAA retreat that Emily attended, as conference attended as well. Let's see, I think I had a short list of other things here.
I saw that Diane Radic.
Radic.
I saw her on Jon Stewart.
Oh, yeah? Oh, good.
Yeah, very interesting.
Well, we have her book. Yeah, we all have her book too, which has a number of hoaxes about... She's really a great supporter of public education now, having moved from the dark side over to the brighter side, in my point of view. I did want to mention the regional spelling bee that occurred. Dover just barely didn't make it with my one word, but I was the pronouncer there a couple Saturdays ago. A strange character named Pythagoras has been reported to be visiting the elementary schools. In fact, has gone around all the elementary schools. And my wife claims that he looks something like a tall man wearing a tablecloth, but...
I bet your wife is right.
I've been checking up on the math understanding there around the schools. I haven't got to the math classes here yet. This also fits in with the math course, that higher math course that Dr. Matt Sharma is teaching for the number of our elementary school teachers, but mostly at the... Mostly our high school, middle school teachers and teachers from other neighboring schools. I think that's about it. Yes, I'll keep my... That's it. Thank you. Move on.
Is there any way to get the information about the schools that won those awards on the PPSI or PPIs?
PPIs, yeah.
And like a press release or something?
Well, yeah, I'm sure there are. Okay. Yeah. I'll talk to you. Yeah, I think I put it to my list. Good.
Okay, any comments or questions? Any other questions?
Oh, well, from the politicians, the Ed Senate Committee priorities are... Our House committees are collective bargaining at the pre-K level, private school and tax dollars, school safety and early education.
And representatives there?
Yes. Who were there? That was, well, John Moran, Jeanette White. Jeanette White is on the Ed committee, she said or something, isn't she? She's the chair of another committee at the Senate. Well, anyway, she's reporting on that. I just call attention... It seemed like a pretty limited agenda. In other words, it's not very ambitious in terms of...
She chairs the...
The legislative agenda. And the Senate is not likely to do too much more than that because they don't have the ability to write new bills in the second year. They have to have them all published by December one for the Senate to be considered in the second year of the biennial. Great. Okay, that's it. Sorry. We'll move on. I'll keep talking.
He just gave us a warning, so we're going to take you up.
I'm a font of whatever, you know?
All right, we're moving on to you, Frank.
I am going to defer to the budget discussion.
Thank you. The Ed committee, we met on November sixth last week, last Wednesday. We're still plugging away. We don't have a date set for another vote, but we are working on some revisions to... We actually made some revisions to Article 12, which is the article that the state board had issues with around our... Are they sixteen or the twelve? Can't remember now.
Sixteen. Oh, no, twelve was what the state had to... Sixteen is what we were working on regarding closing schools.
Yeah. But, yeah. So anyway, we're still working on language, but we did vote on revised articles of agreement, but not on a date yet. And where did we vote on a date? Did we set a specific date? We did set a...
We have a date, January... January second. January second is the date. And that would be giving us time to receive feedback on the mailing that's going to go out.
Well, January second is the date we're meeting, right? But when are we doing to the... Going to the state board? I forget the date.
That would be January. We wouldn't want to do it before we actually had...
January twentieth or something, I think?
Oh, I don't...
I can't remember the date. There's a date in there. I just have a... I got a folder in my...
Go on line. It's the State Board of Education in January. That's the date we should...
So the committee meets prior to that. We have a few things we're still looking at before we go meet with the state board.
And the election will probably still be June, December.
Oh, yeah, the date is still set for June third. We haven't changed that. There really hasn't been any discussion around changing that.
No, it's just that we can't say that that's official until it's approved by the State Board of Education.
That's the goal.
But that's our proposal.
We actually didn't even talk about changing that.
That would mean that the information meetings that we've had before in various towns would occur likely in May, and at least one of them being within ten days of the actual vote.
And we're talking about, you know, how to continue the public engagement process. And so we'll keep you updated on where we're going with that. But we certainly will be meeting with the public again. It was very useful, helpful to meet with the public in the first round. So anyway, that's where we are. Anything else you guys want to add? Okay, we'll move on then. Wyndham Regional Career Center Advisory Board, Lindo. Something to report on. Got the pass right. We've got post.
It's happening on Tuesday.
Yes, we'll keep you on here for the next time. Thank you for being here.
I was going to say that right away when you brought it up, but...
That's okay. It's important that it's on here. Okay, old business. Townsend Right-Away, is that you?
Well, here we have a little folder on Townsend Right-Away, just so you're aware, the Townsend Select Board, I have not yet... You haven't heard anything?
I have not. I looked.
We... Sorry, we'll pass this on. So just to let the board know, what's happened is that I've been contacted by the legal counsel, basically an enforcement letter that says that the... Our neighbor, the Select Board of Townsend, has complained through their lawyer, through the Natural Resources Board, that we are not in compliance with the Act 250 permit that we were granted to make the improvements on the school building. And specifically, we have not provided a right-of-way that was twenty... Fifteen feet wide and accessible to cars and trucks at all times. That's what the quote of the permit says. Now, we're a little shocked that that's what the permit says. But at any rate, our engineering firm, Bob Stevens, Bob Sanderson, says that we have in fact done the engineering and we have completed the project with the right-of-way there. It just doesn't look like a road. It actually is grassed in back of the gym. The question is, what does the Select Board of Townsend really expect by way of right-of-way? Where do they want it? Usually, a right-of-way is deeded on the properties. It is not deeded on any of the properties. But the original transfer of property from the Leland and Gray Seminary, if you can believe we've gone back this far in the research, does say there is a... The Select Board of Townsend retains a right-of-way across the Leland and Gray property to the town hall for ordinary purposes or something, normal hours or something. This is way back in 1969. And then there's another right-of-way down to the water across the leased land. That's a leased, that's a lease agreement, 99-year lease agreement that we have, uh, with the town for some of our fields, just to give you specifically the ball field, the baseball field and the soccer field, and basically, most of that land is belonging to the town. Then Leland and Gray owns land past that on down towards Harmonyville School. Quite a bit of acreage, actually. I forgot, what was Frank, what's the total?
Eighteen acres now.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, anyway, we, Emily has written a letter back to ask...
Which you guys all approved the last meeting.
Uh, I, I pursued it, um, via email with the administrative assistant, and I've actually left a phone message and, uh, and email with, uh, with David Dezenhorst, member of the Board who originally came to my office.
He's a growth of...
Uh, he is a member of the Board, uh, and I, I think the reason that we have a, uh, may have an issue is because of expectations about what that right-of-way really meant. I was, uh, given a map by the, by Mr. Dezenhorst, David Dezenhorst, when he came, that really has a proposed conceptual, I'll pass it around just so you can see how strange this might be for our campus, just so the Board's informed in case we have to get, there's, this is all public record. This was a proposed parking lot that they had in mind on a previous bond vote that was defeated. It really wasn't part of this document.
It was actually, um, it, it was what I explained when we first talked about this at our Board meeting. You weren't here that night, but it was part of a previous bond proposal. That photo, that, um, printout is our drawing, I believe, and it's what we had proposed. The bond vote failed. We were going to, um, work with the Town, Town of Townsend to try to alleviate the issues of parking, and we were going to add on to the front of the school. That, that bond failed, so we no longer needed, we weren't gonna take up all the parking with the building, so we no longer needed the parking lot, so we moved forward with what you're looking at there. But they are using that drawing, it looks like.
Well, I, I can't confirm that yet. I asked in the last email if you got a copy of, specifically, if that's what they were expecting, so, uh, if I don't...
But they handed you that, right?
That was back in August, yeah, he came in with that. Um, so, I, uh, I just wanna advise the Board that it's likely, uh, well, one possibility is that the Select Board will have someone meet with, uh, Emily, your other representative of the Board, Frank, myself, perhaps Ed McGrath, to look at the land and see what the situation is with what their expectations are, and then we have to decide whether we go back to this Board of Natural Resources and say, we have complied, as our engineers have advised and as we built it, with the terms of the, the stipulation of the Act 250 permit, and then they will come and inspect to see whether we have or not. Um, and, uh, but when I get to that point, I'm probably going to have to hire a legal counsel on behalf of the Board, represent the Board at the Natural Resources, represent this Board, at the Natural Resources Board, and I'm trying to stay away from doing the lawyer thing. The Select Board has already hired a lawyer to send us a letter, or send the Natural Resource Board a letter, that we are not in compliance, so, um, it's hard to talk with people that don't, don't respond, is my summary of the present situation, and I regret that we're in that kind of relationship, but, uh, I will make another effort before I, uh, move further.
And if I could just say, I wanna thank Steven publicly, he's worked diligently on this. I mean, I don't have the time to put in...
I got all the deeds and the leases.
You know, why, why does Select Board want this? Like, what...
Well, but that's, that's a good question.
We haven't spoken to them, so we don't know that.
I, I don't know that they, you know, the reason would be that they wanna put in a parking lot in back of Town Hall, but if they did that, they would have to go through a 250 permit process, which I, they're not undertaking, so, there's some way to work this out if all they want is access for a fire truck and whatever, an emergency. You know, if they wanna have people drive, uh, sorry, anybody driving in and out to a parking lot during the day, as you can see on that map, between this building and Dutton and Jim, the Schools Board, certainly this superintendent advises that we call this issue to the attention of the, uh, of the Natural Resources Board, that in no way did we believe the 250 permit was going to, was gonna allow traffic to go in and out when our kids are here on campus.
Right. But there is something right now?
No.
No.
The only thing we have, looking back at Dutton Gym, there's, there's a grassy place that could drive, we put in a box that you can drive over, there's a box...
And Brett Sanderson, did you say, approved?
Yeah. Brett Sanderson.
We worked with him the original way.
Well, I consulted with him since, uh, we got this, uh, and, uh, we'll have to go out and take pictures and present the case to the Natural Resources Board if we claim that we, if we have to fight it, but I'd rather work something out.
What's back there is, is very, is nearly exactly what was behind there before. We disturbed the area because we added on to the back of the Dutton Gym, so we ended up having to put fill in and build it out behind the addition so that that right-of-way could still be there. It's essentially the exact same right-of-way they've had before, and the access to it is the exact same. Am I right? I mean, it's just...
I think that...
Whatever the width of the, um, addition farther out, that's all.
If we can confirm the place with the Townsend Select Board, we may be obliged to plow it up to their property line. Their property line is basically the telephone pole there that you see, a power line pole there if you come to see the campus sometime. Anyway, that's not...
Hopefully, hopefully they'll get back to us.
Yeah. But, uh, the deadline is November 27th, so something's gonna happen before your next Board meeting. We start, we'd start paying a penalty after November 27th.
So, we'll just keep moving forward, but again, I'll, I'll thank Steven for the inordinate amount of time he has had to put into this.
Another one of those adventures, another one of those adventures in administration.
Well, I mean, I truly do like to see you have time on things for the kids and this stuff, but I appreciate, you know, the fact that we haven't had to hire an attorney for this time, so thank you.
Saves some money so far.
Okay. So, next up is, first reading of the budget. So, you were all sent the budget rationale from Durin tonight, didn't you?
About 20 minutes before the meeting. I have lots of copies.
That would be great.
There we go. I'll send them this way.
I assumed she would come.
Yes. Would you, folks like it? I'd like to pray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I can't.
I wonder how long it lasts.
I didn't read the... Oh, okay. How wonderful. Thank you so much. Are there any extras?
I've only got a little bit. You don't need them. Here, our budget.
I know you did. Okay. No one.
Okay. Thank you.
Our budget. How about if I do a quick overview and have you reviewed your rationale? Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll give a very brief overview of the proposal, and then Durin will reveal the rationale for what you see, and, uh, you know, Steven will jump in as is, is necessary. Here we go. Does everybody have a copy?
Yeah.
It is something I just finished up, um, five of seven, so, uh, I will, I will turn it into a PDF and send it off to you electronically as well, so that you have a more convenient format. Um, and, so, um, you see the, the first page summary, um, shows on the bottom line there a 3.9% proposed increase. Um, we do have many program, um, shifts. The instructional accounts in the, kind of the middle of the page, uh, when you look at a subtotal of instruction, it's actually down 64,000, see, down 2%. Subtotal of instruction when, when we, we look at the academic areas, so, uh, we can highlight what that is, but the single largest change there you see is, uh, in, um, alternative education, uh, where this has been assigned to the special education, um, department. So, um, actually, if you just look down another two, three lines, below alternative education, you see, um, special education, uh, up a significant amount. Uh, but overall, when you look at, uh, the academic programs and the co-curricular with special education, you see this proposal's up, uh, 2%. Uh, we do have many needs in the, uh, support service area that Durin has provided a very good, clear explanation for as well. Uh, again, the single largest impact is in the facility, um, down toward the very bottom of the document here. On the first page, you see we're up 64,000 for a proposed budget of about 90,000, uh, for capital improvements, and again, we have that pretty well articulated in terms of, um, priorities. Uh, so, that is a very, uh, brief review. In general, we, we don't have a net reduction, uh, at all of, of staff in any significant amount. There is a shift from employment to, um, purchase services from the SU. So, for example, the, um, if we turn to the next page, page two, uh, you see, uh, the first line under expenditures, salaries, uh, down 37,000. So, this really represents the shift, uh, of alternative ed, uh, no longer employee of Leland and Gray, um, but a, uh, a employee of Wyndham Central, and if you, if you look down, uh, a few lines, you'll see professional services is up 67,000. So, that's the, that's the shift that we're talking about.
So, that's the special ed?
Uh, professional services is primarily special ed. It also includes, um, technical services. That is another one of the shifts where, um, we have employed technology assistants at Leland and Gray, and they are being employed by the SU. Both of these initiatives are, are part of Act 153, where the legislature has required the supervisor unions to employ special education services, technology services, uh, transportation, food service, all in the effort of, um, being more efficient in, in the, uh, operation of, of support services. And, uh, we, we have seen that. We, we have seen a substantial, um, improvement in the delivery of services, particularly in special education, and a substantial reduction in costs. So, it's a, it's a win-win, where, uh, our students are being served better and we are able to do that at a lower cost, so. Um, page two is, is the same total budget proposal, you can see, uh, 7,073,000. It's just in the format of, uh, what we purchase. First page is the functional areas, how we're organized, you know, art, English, math, and the second page is we break that out into the categories of, uh, spending, salaries, services, supplies, equipment. It's just a different way of looking at the same proposal. Uh, page three are the revenue assumptions, and we, we are, we are definitely on a preliminary, uh, level with the revenue assumptions. Statistics such as, uh, Career Center, um, enrollment, uh, regular enrollment, uh, affect a number of revenue assumptions, and so at this point, um, I, I, these are very, just very preliminary, but I do expect them to change. Um, you do note on page three, the first line, um, you can see quite a difference between the fiscal year 13 actual, uh, and the fiscal year 14 budget and tuition. I had reported on that, uh, to you last fiscal year, where we were short against our budget. We, we have, um, I have looked at tuition enrollment, again, it's, it's too early to, to get a, a clear sense of what current sixth graders are gonna do, um, you know, nine months from now, when it comes time to come to Leland and Gray or, uh, other schools, uh, but we've made a very preliminary estimate, you see that is down from the present budget. Um, and when our revenues are down, generally, our property taxes are the source of funds that make that up, so, um, we will look at that carefully.
Yeah, that estimate reflects the declining enrollment too, right? Isn't that part of the issue with the sixth grades coming up next year?
Yes, it does, yes. There is some relief, you see, in, um, in, uh, special ed, as, as, as you see, uh, increase in spending that we, I spoke to earlier, there is also an increase in revenue that, that helps carry that cost. Um, so that mitigates the, the tax impact. Uh, so, I think, um, I'd like to turn it over to Durin, um, for, for a little more detail on, on the rationale of the changes, and then, uh, I am happy to answer any questions that might come up.
This might be the year of the fewest changes in comparison to the past, uh, which I think is a very good sign. We're figuring things out. Uh, after a, maybe a little too lengthy introduction, uh, areas of reduction, um, is in the beginning, uh, the decision for us to replace the traditional tech ed courses for grade 7 and 8 with STEM courses, uh, results in a reduction of 0.25. Uh, we have been unable to find a licensed tech ed teacher, and Steven was right when he warned me, when we, um, when our, uh, alternative education program moved into special education, that was, alternative education was 75%, and the teacher also was at, um, 25% doing tech ed. Uh, and then when he moved to 100% special ed, that's when that vacancy opened up, refilled it with someone who's not certified in the area but is continuing the same curriculum. And, uh, based on that and other factors that I've listed here, including the incredible national and state emphasis on STEM, and actually a real sim, um, similarity between the cars that students are designing that we saw, uh, this evening to the traditional, like CO2 cars, and some of the more, um, I guess canned, traditional programs that don't open up the inquiry and the other, um, instructional methods that Mary Davis was speaking to. So, that's why next year, what we would like to do is that all the seventh and eighth graders have a quarter of, so nine weeks of STEM, um, each year.
So, what classes are being cut there?
So, right, so, so, uh, right now, the seventh and eighth graders do a quarter long elective in tech ed, and instead they would be going, doing STEM. Cause right now, it's anywhere between a third, probably a third to half of our students are able to fit STEM in their schedule, but, cause it's not part of the required art, family consumer, science, um, health, and the last one is tech ed. So, we'd be replacing that with STEM. And we have the staff to do that. We want those classes with all the students in there. So, that's why it's a reduction, and the Science Department is already doing it, but this way they'll be able to reach more students.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't really fulfill, fulfill a science or a math requirement, a STEM course, right?
No.
It's just a...
It's a middle school.
Yeah.
It requ, it fulfills the...
Right.
Right, it fulfills the requirement that we provide at least a quarter of tech ed slash computer science education at both seventh and eighth grade. So, that's in the, um, 2,000 school quality standards that we have to provide that.
The position of the woodworking teacher coming down very small. I know nothing about that program, but that's part of the, the whole overall planning piece?
Uh, I'm not really sure what the history of that is, um, but the teacher of woodworking really teaches, uh, the, uh, one long block course each semester, which is a 0.33 teacher. He does all the professional development, goes to faculty meetings and all that, but for some reason, before I got here, his, the percent, the, the, the FTE was not 0.33, it was a little bit more than that, and, uh, so, this year, actually, it's already in effect this year, that he had requested to actually be 0.33, cause honestly, I was giving him a lot more work to do. I said, you're not 0.33, you're this, and we actually figured out down to the minutes how much more work he had to do for Leland and Gray, uh, which I was, I was sad to see it be reduced, because now I don't have someone doing that, but we didn't want the duties.
Okay.
Yeah, let me remind the public...
Kind of watch, nevermind, just keep going.
Well, hang on, I mean, you raised it, you, your, your question brought up an important thing for the public and for the Board to recognize. When we're comparing things, quite often we're comparing budget to budget. That's what's printed. Well, budget to reality of what we're doing right now, you know, what was, what was published as the budget last year is not necessarily what we've implemented this year. In most cases, it is following the budget plan, but here's an example of where the budget shows a, a reduction, but in fact, the person's already not working for real this, you know, in the present school year. So, that's why it's hard to find, well, what are the kids not getting, you know, sometimes? I mean, and...
Right, I mean, we've always, we've always allowed for flexibility within our budget plan and our budget, which we would encourage, encourage, because we have to meet the needs of our students, but for the most part, we do follow the budget plan, and I'm thrilled that we've been able to follow it as closely as we have been. I, I've been really impressed with the way we've been able to do that, especially in the last few years.
Yeah. So, just take care to ask that question too, compared to, you know, what is going on now, or was this, you know, because our publication is always gonna have to compare to what was published in your annual report.
Well, and if I could just say, um, it, it's Durin's diligence to, um, following the budget plan that made this happen, because, you know, you, you figured it out right down to the minutes, how many, you know, you were gonna make sure you get the most out of your foot staff, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure they do as well. Yeah? So, thank you.
Uh, Frank discussed already at length about, um, the alternative education program now, now being in special education, so that's where that's, uh, switches, and that, um, shift has gone very well. And that shift has gone very well, I would say. It's been a very successful year. The first quarter passed with much, you know, it's this, the two main teachers are the same, and it includes grades seven, eight, and nine, not just eight and nine. So it's a, I think it was a very good move and able to meet more of those students' needs. I put academic departments in program decreases, even though it looks like in the very beginning where it says driver's ed up nineteen percent, art up eight and a half percent. There's a few increases in teacher's salary in three different departments. But overall, the regular education budget allocation is a decrease of almost two percent. So just all that combined together. Any questions about decreases?
Well, how about the field trips? You went from, I'm just kind of curious, that's a decrease. I'm just kind of curious, you went from eight, you went from eight thousand, two thousand thirteen to ten, and then back down to eight.
Eleven, really.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of curious, what's the shift in thinking there? Last year, you were...
We were at eleven thousand last year. Ten-nine, so now it's down to, now it's down to eight. That's a good question.
I'm just kind of curious what you're, what's going on there.
That is also based on teachers' requests for field trips. And it's, so that's pulled from different budgets, and that's where that figure would have come from.
Meaning that you guys didn't use the eleven thousand?
Yep, I, well, we're, right now, we're in that budget, so I can't say if we're going to spend every penny by June. But when teachers propose their budgets for next year, they can say, "I don't know if I can make that field trip happen again," or "That's actually a field trip I do every other year."
Yep, okay.
And you can see in the actual fiscal year thirteen that we just wrapped up those eighty-two hundred. So it is, it is similar to that.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the jump, why we just dropped.
Any other questions so far?
I know Mark was just a place to ask, but were other, I noticed that you're proposing seven thousand a year for the car. Were other options open, too? Is that...
I'll defer to you.
Sure, that's a reserve at this point. So we did purchase the car after looking at lease options. I think it's now five years, four, yeah, five years old now. And so the plan is to reserve seven thousand for three years. We will look at the same scenario. At one time, the state of Vermont was subsidizing driver's ed vehicle purchases, and it made the last purchase very attractive. So it is something we'll evaluate, but we know, we know we'll need to make a commitment, you know, after eight and the ninth year of the present vehicle. Will they look for some more help? Yeah, yeah, I was, I think it was, you know, a brand-new, I think it was a Chevry Pal, I forget, but seventeen thousand was the purchase price a few years ago, which was a very good price. You know, we couldn't, couldn't do that on a, on a general market.
Yeah, I just, I know some dealers up in northern Vermont have been helpful towards schools.
Yes, good, thank you.
Do schools never concession out their driver ed, I guess, to private consumers?
Well, there's, there's some debate going on about that. There was an appeal or at least a suggestion by the Secretary of Education and the Commissioner to permit people, schools, to contract or have the instruction provided by a non-licensed educator. You know, some of those, what do you call it, licensed, certified to teach drivers ed to the public. But, and that hasn't happened.
They took a stall when it was first proposed.
Yeah.
Does that be a question of legality?
I mean, it is a bit like the outsourcing debate that we have in this country. And certainly, the faculty member who is teaching driver's ed, and especially if they're full-time on a, in a larger school, and they are at the faculty meeting, apart from the key, there's certain rationale benefit compared to having somebody, you know, in a local driving school. The reality here is it'd be pretty difficult to find somebody local, but, you know, if the market were open to do it. And then, of course, it costs people. I mean, you know, there's other possibilities, too. You can always get the driver's license if you're willing to pay the academy fee and so forth. But the state of Vermont feels that kids, particularly in the rural setting, need to be able to drive.
And we're required to offer it.
And we're required by law to offer it, and now we're required to offer it during the school day!
But those concessions, guys, have costs.
It's a loss, I think.
But you probably need to have them fingerprinted, and I mean, you'd have to be a lot of stuff to go out there.
You raised a good issue. It is one, though, the way I said, suggests is a political decision to be made at a broader sense because right now, we have to hire, we have to hire a licensed educator to do it, and we have to do it, have to provide at least sufficient opportunity for kids to access that during the school day. We tried to do it during the summer and so forth, but, because after all, it conflicts with the other academic schedule and the other demands on kids' time and having to do it today. But we...
What happened with the summer idea?
Well, it was undersubscribed. We couldn't do it.
Couldn't get enough kids to sign up.
Couldn't get enough to sign up to make it worth.
They had an expense attached to it as well.
Well, that is an area that we keep looking at, and, but it is, you know, it's a hot potato because most parents realize they'd like their kids to be able to get their driver's license and be able to drive.
Okay, we've got a lot of program increases to discuss, so.
Thanks for raising it.
Are there anything, any other questions about the program increases?
If I could just mention that driver's education is a course that has been identified as one in which more reading and writing is traditionally taught. So the teacher has undergone the same training and integrating common course data standards and literacy as everyone else. There's a major paper in that course. He has been increasing the instruction and the assessment practices in that course. So, and I'm the direct supervisor, and so it's very much in alignment with the comprehensive program we provide.
That's a great point to bring up. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to give that up. It would be one less course our students would have that with literacy, exactly. And it's such a high-interest area.
High interest.
Oh, yeah, so they'll read, "Oh, my God, and what?" You know? "I need to do this."
They have a reason to.
Oh, and they have a lot to write about.
They want that license.
All right, that's great.
That's right, right. Whatever the expectation is, they're going to need it. Okay, so program increases. We've talked quite a bit about school evaluation, and I really appreciate all your support on this, especially since this will not include in the proposed budget next year, twenty thousand dollars to go to NEASC. Instead, we can look at doing this for a quarter, that amount that we anticipate so far. And plus, we had other fees that were expected each year, something about twenty-three hundred. And so although we would budget, you told me a thousand dollars for NEASC fees each year, but it was in fact, like I said, about twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, for the off-season.
Yep, and, but it's, even though it would have been a huge increase, it's a much smaller increase. So any questions about that?
But we're not competitive.
Correct. Frank has spoken already about the increases in special education. We have nine more students than before, and that's nine coming in from next year compared to who we have this year, right? So we're coming from seventh graders. And of course, because alternative education is, has moved to the special education department, that's where that increase comes from as well. In instructional technology, this is where we are looking at purchasing a 3D printer and other equipment for the STEM courses, but it is, overall, a pretty small increase in comparison to the other area where we're going to be decreasing in technical education. And another big chunk is around school facilities. In our forty-three, it seems to be forty-four-year-old building, the average school in the U.S. is forty years old, and seventy percent of them are in need of repairs. I just read that on the White House website when President Obama was proposing thirty billion towards school repair and construction. So that didn't go anywhere, unfortunately, but it was fun to read his original plan. But we do have work to do in our building around HVAC, insulation, food service improvements, plumbing and electrical infrastructure. Now, we talked before about the food service improvements, the cafeteria, and I can't remember if we discussed at our last board meeting, we're looking at doing it over a three-to-five-year period rather than trying to make it all, no, okay. So I had several conversations, meetings with Frank and Ed McGrath, Director of Buildings and Maintenance, about what's the best approach to being able to install a real professional kitchen. And when I got the numbers from the AVI group this year, I was, I didn't have, I got the numbers too late to be able to compare it to last year, but it was not nearly ninety-four breakfasts a day and two-hundred-and-fifteen lunches a day. That's a lot of preparation and distribution. And so the increase is sixty-four thousand dollars overall for the first phase of the kitchen improvements, which is the purchase of equipment. The second year will be infrastructure, so electrical, plumbing, ventilation. And then the third year, furniture and other things needed for the move. And the idea is that where the cafeteria is now, and we think about where the family consumer science room is, that those two would switch. So the family consumer science room is considerably larger, and that would be a place where there'd be all devoted to food, almost all devoted to food prep, and then the family consumer science classroom. But those classes tend to be smaller, so even though it's a smaller space, there would be room for them, and they would have windows in that class, which would be very nice. And, there's things about the school facilities, listing what equipment we would be purchasing and what Phase Two would look like, that we're anticipating it costing forty thousand dollars. That would be for FY sixteen. Any questions around building, infrastructure, food service? So, as you can imagine, we're, sorry, go ahead.
I had the phase in front of me, so the phase one, equipment, any of those in the year?
Yes. We locate two years from now. So, for example, the walk-in cooler or freezer, whatever it is that we would be purchasing, either one of those would have to be something that... And then, any other questions? In the last piece, I did not get a final number from Frank about the Leland Central supervisory expenses. We are expected to learn the cost on December first.
Yeah, I did want to mention that that is another somewhat significant increase in the proposal. And even though the SU office budget proposal is primarily a salary-driven, because obviously we don't operate schools as a school district, and the proposal in general is about a three-percent increase, much like the average salaries for the teachers' negotiated agreement. However, the, another significant part of the supervisory union is the grant programs. And as you've heard, sequestration is starting to reduce some of the federal grants. And one of the critical services that have been funded through a grant is technology. So the Director of Technology position has been funded through a grant. It is, it is now time for us to move that to the, essentially, the superintendent's budget. So there's going to be a pretty significant shift from a grant-funded budget to the superintendent's budget, which gets assessed to all the districts. There are some offsets where what was previously charged to the grant becomes more available for some program, but not, it's not a loss. There is a loss of funding. So that's what you see when you go through the detail. You'll see in the board, the board area on the summary page, you can see a significant increase in the board and SU administration on the first page. And the detail, Durin referred to the evaluation, that that is traditionally been budgeted in the board area. If you go to page fourteen, you can see the increase in the board's budgets up quite a bit associated with what Durin was describing. And then on page fifteen, it's still too early to tell what the SU assessment will be because it's allocated based on average daily membership. And average daily memberships, that data is being collected now and sent to the state of Vermont. It's part of what we will use, as we always have, for the equalized student calculation. And as you know, that is what, that's the statistics that is also used to calculate the tax rates across the state by law. But on page fifteen at the top, you see the supervisory union significantly, even though the salaries are relatively same as the teacher's proposal, the assessment is up because there's more salary being funded by the local districts. That number will definitely change. The two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand will definitely change when we get the ADM numbers. And it's, I can't tell you if it's going to go up or down until we get those statistics.
And just to make clear that ADM determines what share Leland and Gray has of the students served by the SU. That determines what amount of money we have to plug into each school district budget, including the Union School District of Leland and Gray, to pay for the WCSU services. I will clarify one point I wanted to add to Frank's explanation there. The real issue with the federal grants is two, there are two aspects. One is that the money is reduced. The other one is that the way we can spend the money is further constrained. We were doing, we were funding and supporting the salary of the technology in our office on the consolidated federal grant, and we're not permitted to do that any longer. So we now, but what it can be used for is technology for instruction or support. So we're probably shifting that to our technical assistance, IT assistance in the buildings. There's one that's itinerant and one that's signed here. So that's what Frank was alluding to in terms of there being some offsets. But in the end, it is getting more expensive to provide the services from the SU office because at one time, Frank could probably tell me that a percentage funded by the feds was much greater in terms of thousands than it is at this point. You know, we purposely shifted the money away to teacher training and to emphasize internal capacity by our teachers and improved learning.
That's just lack of money, of grants coming in. I mean, it would happen whether we go to the CEA or through the board or, I mean, between the school district or not, we're lost the money, the revenue.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. But I, but I will, just to be transparent about this, at one time, in the superintendent's office, there were two curriculum coordinators funded by the consolidated federal grant. And instead of that, now, if you want to look at it over the time, we're funding, okay, a Director of Technology, at least to a major degree in this proposed budget. But the money that was there, the difference between those two positions and one has really been invested in our, in our teachers in terms of our teacher training and professional learning and the SIMS program here, the FONAS and PNL, the BALS and the MAB.
Because we understood that it was more effective to put our money...
That's right. That's a strategic decision about where to invest the money.
So are our kids going to China this year or no?
Yes.
So there's no revenue coming in from, for Journey East tuition, like the amounts of out-of-district students, I mean, zero?
That would be in this year, not next year.
That would be in this year, not next year.
Right.
And we actually have...
But we didn't get, we got six thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have one.
Yep.
Brattleboro will not do it any longer.
Brattleboro's not going to do it anymore?
No. I mean, students may fund themselves, but they won't pay the tuition. I'm not aware of any local schools paying the tu- other schools paying the tuition for students to attend Journey East.
So if they want to, if the student wants to attend another school, they've got, something the parent, someone's got to pay for it?
Correct.
That's not going to help. I mean, that's, that won't really...
It's a challenge.
Yeah, that's not going to work.
Fortunately, we did have two foreign exchange students after going through the SEVIS certification process that allows us to charge for tuition. So we did collect sixty thousand in tuition. We did have to cover a number of costs, including host families. But there was a, as of the end of fiscal year thirteen, a pretty significant contribution to the Journey East program to help fund the trip. But that activity has continued to be part of the special revenue fund, because it has been pretty much self-funded. It's not relied on tax dollars. So at this point, it looks like we have another year funded, but we would very much like to see more foreign exchange students attend.
Well, tuition.
Tuitions.
Yeah, they're not of exchange, they're others.
Their tuition paying foreign students.
So at this point, you're relying on, or going to hope to attract foreign exchange students to help fund the journeys?
Well, it's not just attracted, it's being able to get them through visas that they can take.
Right, right.
Getting them into the country is hard.
Targeted effort, yeah. Tom and...
And Tom's still doing it?
Tom and a Leland Gray teacher just came back, right, in October, from a trip, specifically made contacts, and we're hoping that does produce more enrollment.
The supervisory union building, that's what it's, you know, is there any savings by, with, you know, real estate so low and interest rates so low to buy any building?
Supervisory union can't.
Oh, really?
But it doesn't mean we can't be looking at other ways. I think that...
Yeah, the previous lease, I did, you know, negotiate quite a reduction. And, you know, so we're better off than we have been, and we've been able to reduce, like, we made sure we contracted for replacing the boiler and the heating system, so that it's more efficient and we're spending less on that, but...
That's where we are right now.
That's the only thing we can do.
But I mean, you know, if, for example, we had a piece of property that we could bring the supervisory union into, that would be great, same with the other school district. Or, if you remember, I'm sure you remember, we talked about purchasing a piece of property across the road at Leland Gray. And then it would be leased out to the supervisory union. That would have been a great deal if we had been able to go through with that, that, so we did go forward with that.
There's no idea that I'm still declining enrollment to make offices and...
We did consider Brookline, the Brookline School Building. But the problem there is that any savings would be offset by the additional travel for our tenant teachers. I am concerned about our building in that we really are sort of to the max. I have, I have actually three people sharing one office and two people sharing another office. Two, no, two people and two people and three people and one. Anyway, I got lots of more people than I got really office space there, but they're all getting along all right. And the good thing about that is they talk to each other and we get, you know, we get some more team camaraderie going. But, and it has a wonderful archive at the bottom. I mean, it's the only dry cellar I think I've seen in Vermont. And it's actually cement and it has lights and, you know, it's, so it's be pretty, I mean, I have a lot of stuff that's supposed to be stored for permanent or something. So anyway, that's, I'll give you a tour sometime, though. Anybody who's welcome, public too.
I would suggest that if anybody has any thoughts or ideas around that, they should be free to give them up. But always look at improving not only our facilities, but our expense for our...
Well, if the red goes through and some schools collaborate.
We are in a three, we are in a three-year lease. What are we in, the second year?
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Lot of work. Yep, good job.
Yeah, very good job.
Once again, the way you put this together, Durin, you were talking about, it's just made it so much easier for us and it makes it so much easier for the public, I think, to follow this. And I really appreciate that.
I really liked how in the kitchen stuff, you kind of had it broken up by where the money was going for that. I'm curious about the software tech part, the sixty-seven dollar, and not having it break out in a three-year term, sixty thousand dollars. And it might help the public pay that up, bring out, oh, we're going to get thirty new laptops or basically desktops somewhere, like, because that's a big upgrade number. So as we try to convince the public, if we can get it all, kind of have more itemized details of that, it'd be helpful for me.
Yeah, which, let me make sure I understand which line item we're...
With the software and technical services. You alluded to...
Give them a page number and tell them what the...
Oh, page?
Sixty-seven thousand, sounds like the capital, capital plan, but I don't...
Yes, yes. It's a significant increase, six thousand has been added to capital improvements for building needs. And so the thirty-two of that is the cafeteria.
So if you...
Oh, I see. Okay, so thirty, all right, so thirty-something M.
That is all part of the capital improvement?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were looking at this, sixty-nine thousand.
Well, I was trying to find, when your rationing, you had four...
Instructional technology is up sixty-nine thousand. It is only a four point one percent increase, but it's that number in there for technical services.
All right, on page fourteen.
Fourteen and twenty-two. Fourteen and twenty-two, which look at? Line is sixty-six fifty.
Something broke in our page?
Well, it's not really, it's...
Oh, I see, yeah.
It talks about the increase, the three to four percent instructional technology, and that's the breakdown for it. And there's a big increase in there.
Yeah, so the page fourteen, that's what I...
Sorry, was it Frank?
Page fourteen?
Yeah, page fourteen.
Yeah, so that's what I had been speaking to earlier about shifts in, from employment to services. So what you're looking at on page fourteen, and you're referring to instructional technology, and I'm assuming, Joe, you were just referring to the up sixty-nine thousand?
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know, that was what you were talking about, Jeremy, but that particular shift...
I'm confusing two different things. I'm confusing English language and numbers.
All right. Well, that particular shift is just the salary and benefits going to zero and being shifted to a purchase service from the supervisory union. And overall, there's not a significant progress.
No, I just thought that's what he was...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, no, I was actually in the, it says four percent international.
What'd the board do to get the E N O insurance up so high?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
I wanted to do the whole, go over the whole support. He got there ahead of me, but I was going to say...
Oh, it's huge.
Go over function twenty-three ten for us, Frank.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, I'm happy to report...
Good question, Joe.
I'm happy to report on that.
Forty-two hundred plus.
So we went out to bid for insurance.
Yeah, it's...
We went out to bid for insurance, that we usually do on a three-year cycle. And the bids were very favorable. The vendor, the successful vendor is Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust, who we've done business with for many years with the health insurance products. But they, ten years ago, got into property, casualty liability, workers' comp, auto, crime, all of that. And overall, the bid came in about thirty percent less than the prior year. So if you added up all of the insurance allocations here, which are, as I was talking about, workers' comp is the largest single portion, and then the liability and so on, you would see an overall reduction of about twenty thousand in this budget. So I haven't answered your question yet, but I'm about to.
I know you're going to. I appreciate the background. Go ahead.
So if you look at page sixteen, and then, yeah, page sixteen is where most of the insurance expense is for the non-payroll related, which is the property insurance and so on. You see that insurance line on page sixteen is down eight thousand seven ninety-six, thirty-six percent. Okay? So insurance is assigned to the various functions within this budget. Workers' comp is a percentage of payroll, so you see a significant reduction there. Workers' comp, you see up a little, a few, a few lines in that particular page. You look at any page, workers' comp insurance is down this twenty, twenty or something percent. Overall, as I said, there's a significant savings in this budget associated with that bid result. However, the vendor, Visbit, aligns the premium to their products differently than the previous vendor did. So the school board portion, that's where they assign the premium under, they call it leaders', errors', and omissions', insurance. If you add it all up, the total bid was a hundred and seventeen thousand for all schools in the supervisory union. That compared to doing business the prior year at a hundred and seventy thousand. So that, there is a huge difference. We did lose Win Hall, so that's, you got to take out Win Hall's portion of that, but there is still a very significant reduction in cost. It's just, I wasn't going to rewrite the Visbits bill to us, the invoice, where they put that number down for school board errors and omissions and school leader liability. I could have argued with them and said, hey, we're used to only budgeting a fraction of that. Would you allocate that to some other line? And I don't, I don't, I don't see the value of that, but that's the answer.
And professional services went up, and we know what the school evaluation is, and so I was actually surprised to see school evaluation in under school board there, but I recognize...
Yeah, we could change it. It's weird, New England accreditation, it's always been reported.
Yeah, I know, I remember.
If you want to restate that in another area of the budget, that's...
No, it's just...
Fine with you.
But I think maybe we should, well, I'll think about how we're going to deal with it. And the professional services is up from, it's up a thousand. Is that based on use prior year?
Might be based on anticipation of negotiations, Frank, is that what we're doing there?
Oh, yeah, it's good enough, huh?
It is. It is, it's anticipation of also addressing healthcare reform and evaluating, you know, employers who have more than fifty employees have to be prepared for a, you know, the task to see if we are offering affordable care. And fortunately, again, Visbit is offering a service to essentially come in and evaluate our employment practice, our contracts, and to what extent, we are putting ourselves in a position to have to pay a penalty if we don't comply with the healthcare reform, so...
So, so give me, and take a step, I appreciate that, but take a step back and tell me what's under professional services under the school board function?
Typically, it's negotiations.
Okay, and this year, actually, we are, we are negotiating the support staff contract, but we don't always use an attorney for that one. And I don't think we're going, is it this budget that we're starting to do it again?
No.
Oh, yeah, FY fifteen.
Is it? Are we already there?
Yeah, we're going to, it's going to...
Master contract is up in this budget?
It's going to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
When it comes back?
Yeah.
I was thinking it was the following year.
Well, we were at it for a couple of years.
It is, it is in this budget. Okay. So that would explain. Thank you.
Next, next fall, we'll record.
Yeah, because, you know, we're doing a good job as a school board here, folks, I think, and we aren't spending a lot more money, so we have to make sure we're exploring all that. Don't have to think we're just going to pay more or something. We're causing problems where we...
If they just look at the bottom line, they should be...
We haven't had that happen. Okay. Other comments and questions on the draft budget that you see in front of you?
So what's next?
I would ask, Frank, you said you're going to send P D F, I think that'll do it. There are three board members who aren't here tonight, but I want to make sure they get this as soon as possible. I know Durin's already sent out her budget rationale, so if we could do this to them and just let them know this is the only way they're going to get it. If they want a print and copy, they can stop at central office and get it, or here, at Leland Gray to get it, whichever you prefer. Just if you just put that in the email, or whoever sends it, I don't care who doesn't.
Is the column label at the top, so FY two thousand and fourteen, is that supposed to say proposed?
No, you could say adopted, yeah. Proposed and adopted are the same in fiscal year fourteen, which is always nice.
Questioned different, yeah.
It helps to distinguish, yeah. Thank you.
Good one. All right, I'm sure when we all go home and dig through this in a little more detail, we might have more questions ready for the next meeting, which is the nineteenth. It is. Okay, so were there any other comments or questions on the budget? If not, we can move on to those and payrolls. We've done a good one.
We've got one.
So much, good. Make a motion to approve a person ending that, the question, somebody would.
I make a motion to approve girls' and boys' superministial...
I don't have... So the number has to be changed? Okay, I see. Yeah, we could, while they're, while they're going through that, how about we do the consent agenda?
That one wasn't there, wasn't here at all.
Move to approve the consent.
This, Jessica?
Second to approve the consent agenda.
Nineteen. Okay, I know she, I know she cross-sussed it.
It's been moved to second to approve the consent agenda. Typically, that doesn't have any discussion, but I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with what's in there. We talked about this in the last meeting, that we were going to have these adopted. That's what these are, adopted.
Yeah, I have a copy of the F twenty.
What it is for the Cameron's policy, D thirteen, and policy F twenty. D thirteen is Health Insurance, Affordability and Accountability Act, and prevention, F twenty is Prevention of Harassment of Students. We talked about these at our last meeting. We have, we all have copies, they've been posted.
So these are, this is part of the consent agenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So you don't need to put anything in there except we've approved the consent agenda, as long as we do approve it?
Joe moved it.
I have a question.
Joe moved it about the consent agenda? Oh, well, we should probably pull it out of the consent agenda then, if we're going to go in there.
Well, I don't know, on the harassment thing, is that in the consent agenda?
Yeah. Okay, so you want to remove F twenty?
Okay, so, so Bruce, in the minutes, what we, what we're asking, we're, we've got a motion to approve the consent agenda, but there's been a request to move policy F twenty out of the consent agenda, so we'll take that up after we vote on the consent agenda. So what we've moved is...
My question's so small, sorry.
It's okay, we'll do it this way.
It won't hurt.
So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, which includes only policy D thirteen, please say aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now we'll just have a quick question around...
The minutes were in there too. You just said, which includes only D thirteen.
Oh, they are in there, I'm sorry. You're right. And the minutes were also in there, October eighth. I apologize. So now, we have a question. We're approving policy F twenty for adoption. You can make a motion to approve it, and then we'll discuss it. Lynda, do you want, or somebody wants to? Okay, it's been moved to approve policy F twenty. Is there a second? Lynda's seconding it. All right, comments, questions, thoughts?
It's very, very quick. I'm just very used to seeing religion in the list of nondiscriminatory.
I'm sorry, you're very used to seeing it or not used to seeing it?
I am used to seeing it, and it's not there.
Right. I don't think we have a choice, but I, well, it was cream... I don't think we have a choice, but I, well, creed is what that is. That's the new, that's the new religion.
Creed is religion.
Creed covers religion in a much broader way, which is why it is creed. Good question.
Well, I told you it was gonna be small.
It was.
It was okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we're good.
Any other comments or questions on F twenty? If not, all those in favor of adopting policy F twenty, prevention of harassment of students, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, we need to now look at, are you straight down on that? I need them.
I haven't found, there's a document for a teacher reimbursement, and I would like to, I would like to have that processed. So if we could approve it with a contingency, I could email you a document or something tomorrow. Is that all right?
So I need the.
Yeah, yeah. It's a pretty significant reimbursement for, for a teacher, and I do see that the document is not where you would expect it.
Okay, so we can.
So we'll hold that, hold that check until they get better one.
He's saying approve it and send the.
Yeah, if the committee's okay.
Are you two okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the warrants are ten twenty-five, eleven-eight, eleven-twelve, and eleven-twelve is two. They're number eighty-eight, number eighty-nine, number sixty-five and sixty-eight. The total warrants are three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And payroll, eighty-five, eighty-nine, ninety and ninety-one, those are the cycle numbers. They total three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Total warrants of payroll is six hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventeen cents. Motion?
Motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Patty and Bruce, and reviewed clearly, thoroughly by Patty and Bruce. And they're, Frank will be sending them follow-up on the one question they had over reimbursement, teacher reimbursement. So you guys can expect to see it tomorrow. Frank, will you just send me a copy of that, too? Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the, motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Yes, okay, motion passes, this is for you, Bruce, put in there. Okay, Stephen told me we did not need an executive session, is that still true?
Right.
Good. And our next meetings, they're important. This is out of our normal meeting schedule, so next Tuesday, November nineteenth, I hope you can all make it. I guess, I guess I'll send an email to, I'll send an email out to everybody, just making sure that the people who aren't here, the board members who aren't here, know about it again. Because I'm not sure if they were even here at the last meeting. Bomin was here, but the other two weren't, I don't think. And then W C S U board meets to look at our proposed budget for the W C S U on November twentieth, that's the following day.
Keep in mind, that's at New Brook.
It is gonna be warrant for both the full board or executive committee.
Yeah.
As we do normally, any minutes at New Brook. So please feel free to come, look over the budget.
That'll be the first reading of the whole superintendent's budget.
Yeah.
And give an opportunity, if the board, so, you know, decides, or any board members want to have further discussion at the board, at this board level regarding it.
I would just say that, you know, as you know, there's quite a bit of increase for us, for a lot of reasons here.
Yeah.
Because of the shift from our s, our school district to the supervisory union. So please feel free to come if you can, that meeting, to get the explanations. December fourth is when we vote on that budget, which will impact ours. And we vote on our budget here, December tenth, at our next regular meeting.
Will the rationale and the pertinent parts of the budget document be online?
The proposed.
Yeah, as soon as possible, so the public, because I think the nineteenth is kind of like a public.
Yes.
Yeah, it's.
Opportunity for them coming.
Yeah, I think, we've been doing it enough now that people, we're aware, we're gonna do it, we'll do that. And so, that's a point, can we get that online, I think?
Yeah, Durin's report is. Durin's report was published on reports, we'll put it, we'll try to give it a special spot, I don't know if that'll happen.
I mean, I don't know where, where you'll.
It'll be in a board report or something, I think.
Or maybe put it on the school website.
Right. And I think it's important, I mean, if it's put under school board, that might be a little harder to put under.
Right, no, I think we can put it directly on the website, yep.
Just to be real transparent.
So you want this on there as well?
I think the board wants this on there. Yeah, and Allison, Frank, and you can, over both places.
Yeah, it should be on the board's side, too. Go ahead.
I'm just going back to the conversation we had earlier about the survey of graduates, and if that's something we would wanna include.
Oh, good for you, that's right. We said we'd bring it up in the financial.
I couldn't tell you right now what it would cost, but I would probably budget four thousand. I, I think it's extensive. I mean, I would have to contract with someone who knows what they're doing, and it's a lot of time on the phone. I think it's, it's a, I don't know, it's an investment to be made once every five years, ten years. But we don't even have a baseline, other than we have the report that Stephen was referring to, as well as our annual college acceptance rates, but we had, we couldn't tell you where they were four years later, even based on the report Stephen's referring to.
And it would be logical to put it under the evaluation section of your school board budget. Once again, your school board budget is already pretty, pretty, you know, big increase, but I'm not saying.
Keep it in mind, maybe, and.
Well, what, what I think, you know, the next, the reason why you have another meeting scheduled next week, next week, all right?
Yes, it is, next Tuesday.
Yeah, is, you know, is so that you can change. I mean, there can be some revision before you, or direction to the administration to change something, you know, looking forward to the vote on, on December fourth, so.
Well, Frank can tell you in a drop of a hat how much it'll increase our budget or our line item as well.
Well, I'd wanna make sure that it was, that the value of it.
Yeah.
Fit the expense, you know, if it seemed valuable enough, but if the value of it wouldn't be that remarkable, and that might take time to figure out, so.
So how does the board feel? Whether we wanna ask the administration to.
It's worth looking into, because there's been so, so much changes going on now. It would be really good to get a base, and then see, well, where were you, what's happened for you.
See true information, not just somebody making suppositions.
Yeah, it would be fairly compelling, and hopefully in a very positive way, but four years from now.
That's what we would want it.
Yeah, so I mean, seems to me that would be worthwhile. But I don't, why don't you do the, maybe you could do some research to see.
I don't think I'll be able to in time for the budget. That's why I'm saying, we wanna do it, what, we can, under evaluation, let's say we're already five thousand budgeted, we wanted to add, say, another three or four thousand. I mean, I'll say that when, it was probably three years ago, there was a program that I did, an internal evaluation of. It was, there was no official report, but I needed to do a quality control on a program I was very curious about. And it did lead to some changes, but we didn't, it was, it was all internal. And it entailed the calls home, and there were two staff members who were charged with it, and it was many, many late afternoons, and that's not for phone surveys, plus data analysis of what we had.
I mean, I, I respect the fact that you don't have a lot of time, and I, for one, don't wanna be asking anything more of you, but I also feel a little uncomfortable, this is just me personally talking, about looking for putting money into something that we're not really sure what our goal is to get out of it. I mean, we haven't even had, we've had anecdotal conversations about this for years, but I would, you know, I would think that if we're going to talk about dollars, we need to have some more specifics about exactly what our goals are, and what, how is it gonna be implemented?
I don't wanna rush into it in this manner.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering whether we have time to.
Now we've discussed it, it's on the table, let's keep it in mind for maybe next year, and get a plan, and see if it's workable, and.
There are other schools.
It would be hard, yeah.
It's considered to be one of the first steps towards school improvement. What are your graduates doing? And they will tell you what they needed, and, and was, I won't say unnecessary, but didn't, was not helpful in their career. I mean, I've been, I mean, I, I've been asked that a number of times.
And I would think, too, in the competition realm, you know, you've got this, this data that maybe no other school in the area has, and this is really what our kids are doing after school, and this is what they said they gained toward these goals from Leland and Gray, and you've got that right in your own words.
But what does, what really concerns?
So what if you just, what if you, what if you, she doesn't have time, obviously, to put together a detailed plan of how she would, you know, how, how this would go, be implemented, but if she had the resources, then she could.
But what I'm questioning is, how, how do we know what the resources are based on? I mean, the reason, the only reason I'm saying this, saying this is because in the past, we've talked about this a lot, and we've always gotten a much higher numbers than four thousand dollars. It's a pretty substantial thing to be jumping into if it's going to be more than just anecdotal. So I'm a little concerned about the four thousand dollars not being anywhere near what is gonna be enough to help us. And I, I mean, you might be right, but I, I don't know if that's true. And if we could just have a few phone calls to other schools who've gone into this, and what they get out of it, that would be a lot more useful, I think, for us to make a decision on. I mean, I agree, if we, with everybody, if we could get that kind of information and we could afford to get it, great. But I would hate to be budgeting four thousand dollars and find out it's gonna be ten, to get real good information.
That's the kind of figures you got.
That has been before. Sometimes it's even a full-time person when we've talked about it.
Because you're trying to.
It's a big deal if you want real information.
It won't be available until evenings to talk to, you know, people who work, kids who are in college.
That report that Stephen heard about had so many flaws in it. It was talking about students, some, a group was collecting data from universities or schools and sending it back, and then they did it for the second year and sent it back. It didn't have any, I don't think it had anything to do with junior colleges.
Well, there wasn't any, and I, I also question about transfers.
And transfers of other schools, and there was just so much.
It wasn't a highly.
It was a bowl of spaghetti, and so the resulting data, to me, was really questionable in terms of making real.
Well, it was based on a small number, too. That's one of the things that we have to keep in mind. In some ways, since we have such a small, you know, I would suggest we probably can't catch a very large number of students anyway, because we lose track of them, and we don't have too many graduating each year anyway. So then, then you have to justify the value on some kind of qualitative anecdotal analysis, a qualitative analysis of the anecdotal responses, rather than a statistically valid, you know, response, cut and drag, monkey survey deal.
Well, wait a minute, it, it wouldn't be just, what do you mean by anecdotal? If you're talking to a graduate, did they either have a job, they either went to college, they either, that's, that's not.
Well, if we're trying to figure out about what program, or what prepared them well for their, their success, or they attribute their, what they needed to be more successful, which was really the most informative information in terms of affecting our investments here in our program, what we changed, then that probably requires, I don't mean anecdotal in a like-story way, but I mean that, you know, it means it's a qualitative response, not a response, you know, what was the important, most important course you took? And you have, you know, twenty-five choices there, and you check off one. That, you see, we just don't have that kind of in, you know, the sample group to make statistically valid analysis.
We did do, yeah, we did do phone calls to, I mean, there were staff members who actually took it upon themselves to make phone calls to graduates to say, you know, are, are you in college? Have you, you know, the, the basic single, single questions, like what, what you were just suggesting, but there wasn't really any.
There was no undergaining about that.
Information for them. They needed to go deeper into what you were saying.
Yeah.
Like you took, you're in a college biology class.
Yeah.
Do you feel you're prepared for that college biology class by what you took?
That's what we need to know.
At Leland Gray, the way you were taught at Leland Gray, did that prepare you correctly for this college biology test?
And the other side of it is, all these people that are not gonna go to college.
Yeah.
Did they get a job? Did they start a new business?
Right, absolutely.
Yes.
Right.
So that's just, that's just as critical in my mind, does it, did they go to college?
The people we think were giving an inequality to the, the unequal, you know, talking about the equal education, and if you find out that, oh, wow. I guess we'll beat this one.
Well, I do suggest we can't figure it all out tonight, but I, I do know that the board has to take some, give the administration some direction regarding the budget, regarding whether you want to put an amount of money in this budget, because after all, this budget doesn't get implemented until July one of two thousand and fourteen. So, you know, you have to plan ahead. I mean, we're just in this really awkward business of budgeting eighteen months before whatever happens. So that's, that's, we, we don't need to rush to figure out the specifics of it, but if it is of value, and I would suggest something is of value in that regard, to inform our investments in the future, then you have to, you know, put something in the, in the budget at this time, and if you think that it's too much trouble or we can't really get to it.
How do we?
Can we do it?
Well, I think.
Member, a member to member on the V S B A website?
I think there's, I sense from this discussion that there's, I think that, I sense there's enough interest on the part of the board here for Durin, Frank, and me to look into this and see what we can come up with, even within the week, in terms of what kind of guidance we can give you, okay?
That's totally up to you. We, we don't, I don't think any of us want.
And if we come back to you and say, hey, I'm sorry, we, we don't have enough, you know, scratch to figure out whether this is gonna work or not, then you'll just have to, we'll just have to put it off, because I don't think we should do anything changing the budget after the next meeting. I mean, the next meeting is the public's time to speak, your time to consider and to[1743.82]